Okay, very good. We have everyone back in from the waiting room. Thank you for being patient. We had a discussion with Carol and then we moved here to the waiting room and had a board of finance discussion regarding her salary. In the interest of just making this clean, I am going to make a motion regarding the budget in front of the board. I am going to make a motion that we bifurcate the town clerk salary into two line items. The first line item is one seventeen dash one hundred dash five one zero 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 town clerk salary. We, I motion that we change that to proposed fifty-five thousand dollars per year. And we will add an additional line item for a town clerk supplemental salary of six thousand dollars per year. And this is going to be designated solely for candidates with at least ten years of experience in the highly similar town clerk position. So that's the motion before the boards. Anybody want to second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I heard Louise first. Thank you. Do we have any further discussion in the board? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, I guess we'll move on to the next item. So just to, obviously, this is, should make this clear that for Carol, given her tenure with the town, that this would increase her salary to sixty-one thousand dollars per year in the current budget. Makes it a little awkward in terms of maybe how with all the payroll is allocated, but I think that it's clear if we state it that way. We'll have to work out the management with payroll, et cetera, and Eric further. Eric?
I'm sorry for interrupting. I would just like to say thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. Appreciate it.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure I've got this correct. You're under town clerk salary, you're gonna do, you wanna call it additional salary. What was the exact title?
Supplemental. I'm gonna share my screen. I'm gonna try anyway. There you go. Are you guys seeing it?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so what we have here is this is the original town clerk salary line item. So we've got a proposed base salary of fifty-five thousand per year. And then we want to add a line item for a supplemental salary for candidates with at least ten years of experience in a similar position of six thousand dollars per year.
Okay, and you said, alright, so. Okay, that's all I needed. Thank you.
Okay.
Just wanted to understand what you're doing.
Understanding is a good thing. Alright, so we'll go ahead and move on to additional agenda items. I had sent around to each of you on the elections, in fact, I can just go ahead and continue sharing this, I guess, talk about it. On the elections line item, we had this thirty-two thousand five seventy-five. We were concerned that the registrars may have under budgeted if we actually do have to go to early voting. I did reach out to Linda who reached out to Wally. They spoke about it and they replied that they didn't feel like they needed additional money. They thought if anything, depending on how things roll out, if they don't do early voting in the way that they had thought, there might actually be a lower cost than this budget line item. So that's what we got from them. Any questions? Okay, never remove my highlights, so. It's gonna appear in how to contest the share thing here. Okay. And I think that those were all of the main tasks that we had allotted to ourselves for this particular session, but that is by no means the final word on the budget. Does anybody else have any other line items that they want to address?
I was just kicking something around. I wanna just raise it. I don't have a specific plan for this. I just wanted to, I was looking at our capital fund for this year, the capital fund expenditures that are in the budget. And I was pleased, you know, they are all, most of them are up a little bit. It's a good year to do that, I feel. I know I've mentioned this before. I think it's a good year for us to maybe catch up a bit. The one thing I just wanna quickly ask Eric is, I noticed the tree fund is flat, I think, at fifty K. Or how are we doing on the trees? Are we good? With that amount?
We can always spend more money.
I knew you were gonna say it.
You know, I think fifty thousand works, but part of the reason it works is we've established a really good relationship with Eversource.
With Eversource, right.
And, you know, we're getting, we're just really stretching that fifty thousand a lot. We're being able to do a lot. The, the only thing that's come up recently is, you know, we've used Public Works the last, they've been spending quite a bit of time between the town and school properties. There's a bunch of dead ash that, you know, that, that Jay Tuttle identified that was right. It's kind of on the border between town property and school property. And, you know, well, it's technically all town property, but he, he came to me and said, basically, look, this has to come down. It's right on the edge of the playground. You can see one tree already fell already. They're all dead. These gotta come down. So we kinda re-tasked Public Works this week, cause it was spring break. And we're gonna basically put about five, well, three guys times five days or four days working there to deal with trees. Now that comes out of our regular Public Works budget. However, the tricky part is the upper part of the playground has a series of dead trees and dead limbs reaching over the playground. But they're not ones that Public Works can cut safely because of their location. So, you know, basically what Jay told the superintendent is, hey, you're gonna have to pony up. You're gonna have to bring in tenant. It's probably gonna take at least three days. You got a budget forty-five hundred dollars for that. And she had a little bit of a, she was unclear that she was capable of doing that, given her existing budget. So if you were gonna bump up anything on trees, I would say you would do it and then earmark a specific amount to that portion. It wouldn't have to be a big amount. I, I think fifty thousand would be reasonable, given all the other things we have to do.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
It absolutely answered my question. I, I, you know, I was just looking at each of the funds and, you know, we're doing a good job, I feel like, of kicking some of these up a bit. And I just saw the trees was flat and you just gave me like chapter and verse, I think, on the situation. I'm content. I just wanted to check on it. That's all. And bridge and culverts were good too, would be the other one that was flat.
Yeah, so I, what I think is going to happen, so we are in the next six weeks going to submit applications to the state local bridge program to replace two culverts, the one on Hutchinson Road and the culvert on Lake Road at Basola. Now, I don't know whether either of those will get funded by the state. Just because the legislature right now is debating putting a lot more money into the local bridge program. Because last time around, they have had like three times as many applications as they had funding available to meet the state match. If they do that and we got both of them approved, you know, we might have to move a little money around. If we only get one approved, we have the budget now to do it. And I suspect we'd likely only get one approved, given how many requests there are and what the backlog is. So I guess the answer is that fund could always use money. I mean, in, in the grand scheme of things, you know, we have three that are three, you know, good sized culverts that are kind of in failure mode. But culverts, fortunately, they tend to fail slowly. So it's not like you're gonna come in one day and it's going to be gone. Unless you had a massive rain event. You know, we may end up having to do, it's not out of the question that we would have to do on Lake Road, what we did on Hutchinson for a couple of years, which is neck it down to one, one lane. Because the downstream head wall has fallen off and is starting to grow. But, so I guess what I would say is, yes, that fund could use more money, but I think, given the budget and how much we're putting in capital, you know, I think it's okay.
Okay.
Okay, other questions or comments?
Mark?
On that, yep.
I, I came in at the tail end of the conversation. I know I sent an email. You guys were discussing the difference in the amounts. The bottom line of the budget, you know, the fifty-four hundred. Did we have a resolution of that or we're just not sure?
No, no, we haven't, we haven't resolved that. So we decided to use for the purposes of today's meeting, we use the budget that I sent out at the end of last week.
Okay.
You know, the, the total required number didn't change, but the taxation number is off for some reason. Cause there's a formula differential or something. We just need to update. So I'll take a look at that or, you know, at some point, we'll, we'll get that corrected before our next meeting. And get it out to everybody for sure. So, other, yep, go ahead.
Second question was, did we hear back from the fire commission with any other quotes or are we even getting into that tonight? I don't know if.
But that's, I think, our one big remaining item. And we haven't, to my knowledge, we haven't had any more information.
No, we, there, there's not any more information at this point. And I mean, understand that they still intend, while they have to for our purchasing policy. I mean, they will have to officially send this out as an RFP. And they will have to do their due diligence on finance sources. So we're not anywhere near pulling the trigger on ordering one of these yet. All they're doing is deciding whether it's something that's acceptable to the Board of Finance and Public to even do. So it's, yeah.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll need to, we need to make that decision as part of our budget funding for this year, really. So, you know, we, I think we left the fund alone pending potential additional information.
Right, yeah.
And we have it at a hundred thousand dollars, I think, for the, for the fire truck fund. And so I guess the, the question ended up being, if we were gonna try to make this work, they were gonna need a hundred and ten thou, maybe eighty? I can't remember the exact number.
If memory serves, it was like one seventeen a year probably for ten years.
Okay.
I wanna say, it was in the teens, Mark. It was in the teens.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. And, and the other thing to keep in mind is, they are going, they will have other capital expenses.
Right.
So, I mean, I do think that that is underfunded today. If your intention is to, you know, to put in the budget message that you intend to sign a contract for a new fire truck along those outlines.
Yeah, we, I mean, we would need to fund, and I think you'd identified it about sixty thousand dollars of additional capital expense that would, you know, for SCBA gear, et cetera, the other things that they were gonna need over, you know, that, we would need to fund that payment on top of whatever that would be. The one question we had kinda opened was, per that original quote, you know, we were not gonna have to make that first payment until August of twenty twenty-five. So it kinda, or August of twenty twenty-four, which is the next budget year. So that kinda gets us off the hook for this year, but we can, we need to identify that. We, as Eric said, we need to identify that to the town.
That, yeah, that was the thing, is that we didn't actually need money in this budget technically, you know, to do that contract.
Right. That being said.
Question was to whether we set aside for it.
We wanna take some of the pain this year, you know, maybe bump it up, you know, ten, twenty grand to at least start moving in the right direction.
Yeah, I mean, I personally would.
Nobody likes a big surprise. They were.
Right. I'd love to chip away now, but, you know. We can, we can get into that, that a later, you know, later meeting. Maybe we'll have a little more info, maybe not.
Well, just in terms of timing, next week is our budget hearing.
No, we're getting that close.
A week from tomorrow. Yeah. So it doesn't mean we can't make changes before we go to town meeting, but I think it would certainly, unless there's a compelling reason, it's in our best interest to have a pretty close to final budget for the, for the budget hearing.
I'm kind of on the other side of the fence with that, since we added a couple other things this year that were unintended. You know, this is just a general statement with looking how far, I said this last time, how far RAM came down. The school did go up, you know, quite a bit. We hadn't talked about that, but I'm, that's not a bother to me at all, because I feel like for a lot of years, we've really nitpicked away at their budget. So this could be the year that we just kinda say, we trust it. I'm just gonna make that blanket statement since we haven't said anything and.
Are you talking about the school?
Yeah, am I allowed? I'm just doing an overall statement because our hearing is, you know, in years past, I might have been a little more nitpicky, knowing that we just have so many things we're trying to, you know, it's, I think it's like a hundred and eighty-two thousand of a bump up. Hopefully with, you know, the one less student that they have to outplace, plus purchasing the senior vehicle that will somehow help transportation to the school in the future. Maybe we'll see that back next year. So again, all I was saying is, I'd be, I would rather kinda stay where we sit right now, rather, because I feel like we did bump some of the funds up. The roadwork fund, I think, is up a little bit from, you know. So I, I'd kinda like to keep it a little bit steadier, knowing we're gonna have more payments next year with the trucks that we're purchasing. Nothing goes down. So that's my overall of, you know, throwing more in the fire. Try, you know, I'd just rather take that poison next year.
Any other thoughts on that matter? Louise, Linda, Brian, thoughts about the fire equipment fund? You know, in my view, kinda based on what I'm hearing from the board, that's really the last thing we need to address if we choose to address it at all. Based on what we know today. Anybody like to make a motion regarding it?
Sure, what the heck? We are at a hundred now, so, you know, again, my feeling is putting aside is good. With, but with respect to Joanna, I will, I'll reduce the amount I was gonna ask to bump. I'll move that we bump it up to one twenty-five instead of the one fifty I originally was thinking. We do one twenty-five and see if anybody else will come along with me on that. How's that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Brian.
Brian, okay, thanks.
Okay. And again, the other thing I wanna say about that, by the way, is, we're not really, I mean, yes, we're spending the money in a sense, but we're putting it in savings. It's a little different than, you know, spending the money on something, you know, just, just cause, that sort of thought. It's, it's really just to try to smooth out. My concern is, you know, what if we have a rougher budget year next year? And then we're, we're up against it and then we've got this lease payment. So that's just my thing.
So what, you said one twenty-five?
One twenty-five.
So that, just, just for the purposes of context, that would take our, so our current mill rate is about estimated, given the changes we've made tonight, at about thirty-one point four five. That is a one point four six that percent, about one and a half percent decrease from the current budget. So it's actually a reduction in the mill rate. If we're to make those changes, go to one twenty-five.
Should be negligible.
Sometimes we get surprised. Yeah, it'll, it'll be a reduction in the mill rate of about one point two percent.
But what does it come out to? Thirty-one point what?
Thirty-one point five three would be the new mill rate.
The new number.
Yeah.
And what was last year's number? Thirty?
Thirty-one point nine one.
Thank you for the context. Yeah, my overall view was just, I know that we have so many things coming down the pike with the senior center, the trucks. You know, that if this year with the five hundred grand, you know, that RAM, we were lucky enough to, to not, to, to have like a little savings this year, because I know the other years, you know.
Yep.
We're gonna be building it up again, so that's all.
Yeah, it's just funny. We're looking at the exact same things. We're just coming at it a different way.
I know.
Cause that is exactly my thinking too, and why I wanna do this, so. You know, to me, I look at it the same.
Linda, Louise, questions, comments?
Yeah.
I like things the way they are.
Okay. Louise?
I agree as well.
Okay.
Wait, does that mean Team Joanna? No, I'm kidding, Rob. I just mean for this one issue.
I wanna get pom poms out now.
Cause when they.
So, yeah.
Just keeping it the way it is, is, I just want to clarify, I was being funny.
My feeling is we should increase it. I think one twenty-five is a little bit rich. It really isn't rich, but again, taking into account the fact that we've added these other things. So, okay, well, we have a motion on the floor to increase it to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from a hundred thousand dollars. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, who's voting against? I need Joanna's against.
Are we talking about, what did you say? You're raising it to one twenty-five?
This is my motion on the floor to raise the increase of the fire, fire engine fund from a hundred thousand dollars to a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'm pretty sure Louise is muted, but I think she was a no, right?
Yeah, well, I'm gonna go all call, cause it's confusing here. So Louise, you were a no?
I, no, I agreed with what Rob said.
Oh, you were a yes.
Well, everybody said yes, but Joanna, okay.
Okay. I'm a, okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna vote yes too, because I like that better than the flat. So, okay, I guess that motion carries. Alright, one twenty-five K, again, just for context, that will change our mill rate to thirty-one point five three, which is a slight decrease to one point two percent. Assuming we've got all these other things correct. And again, we'll verify and compare it to the one that Cheryl sent around as well. Okay, do we have further discussion on the budget?
I got nothing else.
Mark, my question, next week will come to our public hearing, right? Our public hearing first. Now, Eric will be putting that on the social media. Like letting them, we'll be advertising that it is a public hearing, cause we do wanna hear from them. And I know it's been a relatively quiet season. And then, we have more discussion, correct, Mark? Well, we'll listen to them, then we will have our, so I guess it's important that we, and we will, we'll have our final numbers, whatever the changes were tonight. And hopefully, I'm gonna kinda look at it too, see if I can find where that change is and, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that the, I think that the, the process next week, it's really a budget hearing. Isn't, isn't necessarily a budget workshop. So what I would typically do, I think, and suggest we do in this situation is present the highlights. You know, we'll just say, okay, this is, this is our summary of expenditures. This is a summary of, of revenues. These are the key items that made significant changes that the board changed from the Board of Selectmen's budget. And this is our final number. And then it's really very, very brief, I think. And then it's really about listening to what, any public comment at that point. And, you know, Eric, go ahead.
So I just wanted to say a couple things real quick. I did, because I knew next week was the budget hearing. And I wanted to get in the River East before that. I did have a conversation with Mike at the River East and highlighted the fact that next meeting was the budget workshop. And I sent him a copy of the budget as it was before today. And I said, that's still preliminary, but this is still fairly close. There may be changes between now and the budget meeting. So, so they can at least start publicizing that. We'll publicize it on social media and we'll try to get it up on the town's website and announce it.
Did we, I, I apologize, cause we, we have the town budget meeting date locked in. Cause I didn't have it in my calendar, my phone.
Set it preliminarily, but I don't, I'd have to go check and see where it was.
Is it the first week of May, Eric?
We do. The Board of Selectmen, on my recommendation, which turned out to be slightly problematic, set it for May second. The reason that's problematic is that is also the date of the RAM referendum. But I think that's actually a good thing. Because we typically have incredibly low turnout at the RAM referendum. And I think it's actually a good thing to be able to say, hey, come to the town budget meeting and, oh, while you're at it, walk right next door and vote on the RAM budget too. And you get a twofer and we only tie up one, one day to do it.
My only question with that would be timing. Our budget meetings are usually at seven o'clock, polls close. So it would be vote, vote before and then come in, right?
Yes, correct. Correct. And I did check with the registrars and the town clerk, that is doable. They can, because we have two registrars and two assistant registrars, we can split and meet our legal requirements. The only thing I was thinking later that was a little unfair and it didn't occur to me at the time I was brainstorming this, was that there may be a couple of the registrars that would have liked to vote on the budget that will be working at the polls during the event. So that is a downside to that. But I kinda think the upsides outweigh the downsides. And getting people to come two days in a row has always proved hard for us. So I think this might be an advantage.
So if the budget doesn't pass or passes by two votes or one vote, then we'll know that we probably should have changed. Now, clearly, it is what it is. So I think, I think we're all set. So just, and just to kind of clarify further the schedule, so that the twentieth, which is a week from tomorrow, is our public hearing. We have one more meeting before the town budget meeting, and that is a regular, regularly scheduled town of Andover Board of Finance meeting set for Wednesday, the twenty-sixth. So we will have a meeting that Wednesday. Hopefully, you know, we'll, we won't have any major debates, drama, changes at that point. We rubber stamp what we've already done or make minor changes, depending on, on what the board decides. And then we go to town meeting on the second and then we see where that goes.
Yeah, but it does give us that, that opportunity to have a meeting after the public hearing. If, if we do surprisingly get a bunch of feedback, we can, we can digest it and come back and do a meeting. It's not like we need to do a tack it on at the end after the public hearing and scramble. So it's nice to have.
Let's hope we don't need to add any more meetings, so.
Believe me, I'm with you.
I know you all are.
There's also nothing that says after the budget meeting or after the public hearing, when you reconvene the meeting that you couldn't show, depending on what you had for feedback, that you couldn't, you know, vote to send that to public meeting right then and there. Because if you did that, that gives the town clerk more time, you know, to, to meet the requirements for, you know, notice and stuff like that.
Okay.
So if we're real comfortable with that after the hearing, you know, we, we can drop a meeting and just go for it, yeah?
Yep.
Yep. Obviously, I will not be at the next meeting. I will be on vacation. So good luck with it. I can certainly answer any questions up through Tuesday of next week that you may have.
We come back in one piece, you hear?
Yeah, definitely. No, no injuries this time. What's, what are the logistics of managing, running the meeting gonna be then if you're not running the meeting, Eric?
So, I think. Uh, so, I think I would just provide you the login info as the host. And then you can run the meeting kind of at your, you know, at your leisure. I mean, honestly, the only thing I do is I hit start the meeting on the app, and then I hit start record, and then I hit stop record, so it's not. You know, it's not particularly bonus.
As I just found out tonight, yeah, it's man.
Right, the only thing that would be difficult is. You will have to admit people in one by one from the waiting room. So what I would do in the case, because you may have public coming in during the meeting. I would keep up the window.
Participants window, yep.
Right, the participants window, so you can kind of visually track that.
Yeah, and then waiting room is at the top, so, okay.
Right, and if you did have somebody that was disturbing the meeting or causing a problem. You can just simply eject him directly from the meeting. Using that same icon, and then as long as you don't let them back in, they're not a problem. Unlike before, we've, by by doing this for settings. You give yourself the the option to do it. You know, the only other thing you have to do is, it makes it somewhat more difficult to share screens. But not for you as the host, for you, you don't have to do anything, because you automatically have the capability for yourself to share screens.
Got it.
You would have to go in and give somebody permission, you hit the share screen icon at the bottom. And allow a participant to share a screen if you chose.
I see there, okay, got it. Okay. All right, anybody have anything further? Okay, anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank Louise, we have a second?
Second.
I mean, we can still talk, this time, I don't want to cut it short for anybody. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, well, if I don't get that by rattlesnake, I'll see you guys next week, I almost stepped on on the trail yesterday, so.
I'll use that. No step on stake, no step on stake, this is, these are basic instructions.
Have a great week, yeah. Have a great week, we'll see you, take care, thanks, guys.
Aye.